Yeah, I'll be going.
Are you available?
Yeah, we gotta talk to everybody during the break about July 4th. Everybody want to get five table?
Yeah, that's we don't think they end up doing table. Channel two, you know. Yeah. So I can definitely there's always something they want to do again. Actually, we're outside.
Be able to tell you in a minute. Come down tomorrow.
Yes, thank you. Okay, there you go. Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
The 25th of 2019 will come to order. Please silence your cell phones. Kelly, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mayor Owen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Commissioner Colletti.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, this is a budget workshop. The first item up is public participation. There'll be a three limit, time limit. If you wish to speak on anything, preferably budget related. If it's for the next meeting agenda, there'll be a chance to speak at that meeting. So any public participation? Seeing none, closed public participation? All right, I think Colin and John have got a.
Thank you, mate. This is the second public workshop on the budgets. The departments were given directions to propose a budget that is flat. This is bare minimum budget that you have tonight. John will give you the more details, but I want to touch just on a few items. For the fiscal year 2019, 2020, citywide proposed budget is 57 million, 822 and $555. In 2019, the tax rule increased by nine and a half percent based on the property appraisal office. And that translated into 358,000, 358 million, 563,992 dollars. In the fiscal year 1920, the proposed budget includes 1,520 and $193 in capital improvements and equipment, vehicle replacements, and the general fund. We also included five new positions. We have finance interposition that we reclassified into a full-time, an additional finance fiscal analyst, and three new firefighters, and an assistant airport manager. Also on the budgets, we kind of made some few changes. We have new funds, the Brandon Center, Live Oak, the golf course, and the sub-funds of the general fund, all of these. Now, even if there are new funds in the budget, you still could see itemized budget on them, and you could see the revenues and expenses in each budget for these divisions. I want to point out to, in the budget, we listed list of projects. They are not on a priority list at this point. However, at the budget workshop on July the 23rd, the staff will make it on a priority list for the commission to look at. Some important items that we need to address is we have included the budget COLA increases, and that depends on the negotiation with the three unions that we have. Keep in mind that we have a couple of dates that we need to follow. On July the 23rd, that's when you set the maximum millage. On August the 20th, you will have another budget workshop, a full day, where the departments will present their budgets, and then you will be able to ask any questions on the line items. September 11th will be the first public hearing, and then September 24th will be the second public hearing. With that, I will have John go through his presentation, and then we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
There you go.
Mayor, Commission, good evening. So today, the overall.
Make sure you got a mic over there.
Sharing Colin's screen, so we'll share microphones as well. Excuse me. This evening, we're going over the overall budget citywide. So at the last meeting, we talked about a few, you know, in the last public budget workshop, we talked about a few things that were affecting the overall city funds. But tonight, we're going to talk about the overall budget. As Colin stated, the budget that we presented to you this evening in the packet that we'll go through later on is 57 million, 822,555 dollars. In this, we have projected, you know, through the property appraiser, they released their preliminary numbers on July 22nd. So we are now able to present this budget with true taxable values for commercial residential properties as provided by the property appraiser. In this budget, we've also created the sub-funds of the general fund for the Brandon Center, Live Oak. And then we've also reclassified the golf course as an enterprise fund and rolled it up as part of the general fund. All of these are in segregated funds. So as you go through the book that you've been provided at a later date, you will see that the general fund is 001, the Brandon Center, Live Oak is 003, and the golf course is 004. Only for financial statement purposes would the golf course roll up. There's not one in there. Would the golf course in Brandon Center roll up into the general fund? Okay? We had this past year, we had taxable new construction of 85 million, 325,514 dollars. We added 692,361 dollars in property value, taxable property value through annexations. Your CRA, it increased by 8.5% from the prior fiscal year. We received word within the last week that on the Florida healthcare, if you recall at the last meeting, we said that we were projecting a seven and a half percent increase. They've now come back at four and a half percent. The COLA, to the general fund, we're looking at salaries will increase by 633,478 dollars. And the other enterprise funds will increase 166,969 dollars, for a total of 800,447 dollars. However, from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, we've seen a reduction in our contributions for our police and fire pension plans. So as a result, with the COLA increase, we're only looking at a projected increase to our salary and benefit line items of 223,715 dollars. Okay? The next few slides came straight from the property appraiser. So I'm just going to highlight what they are, but the detail did come from the property appraiser's presentation that he made to V Card here the first of the month. This first slide, this talks about the just value. So the just value of New Smyrna Beach increased 9.2%. The countywide just value increased by 8%. So New Smyrna Beach is above the average when it comes to just value increase. But just value does not, is not how we base our taxes on. This is before homestead exemptions, senior exemptions, or any other exemptions. So we go by our taxable value. So with our taxable value, we saw an overall increase to our taxable value of 9.3%, which is still above the countywide average of 8.5%. Okay? So looking at our just value versus taxable value by property class, the real indicator is where is our taxable value split? And this will show you that, you know, our taxable value, 83% of our taxable value is in residential. That is always, you know, a good indicator because, you know, it goes to show that we have commercial, industrial within the city. So we're not wholly reliant on the residential taxable value. And that's kind of important utilizing this next slide, is that you can see that looking up through, you know, 2000 to 2006, prices increased by 165%. But then during, you know, the Great Recession, from, you know, 2007 down to 2011, when the property values, you know, decreased drastically, other neighboring cities didn't fare so well in their taxable value because, you know, they're in the low 90% in taxable value. So it is very good to have a mix of property value, taxable value by property class. The next slide, you know, there again, it just goes to show the overall county that we were at the high in 2007 at 62.5 billion. So you can see prior to that, the increase was very drastic. But then, you know, we had the decrease, but then the increase to 2019 has been more gradual. And we are approaching, you know, 59.3 billion in just value. So the property appraiser did predict that, you know, next valuation that we'll be back on target with where we were in 2007. So that's from the property appraiser Larry Bartlett's office, not mine. As we look, you know, at this slide, this goes to show where are your increases coming from? So for us, you know, the green represents, you know, existing parcels, and the orange represents the increase from new construction and annexation. A lot of our growth within our city and the county is directly related to new construction. So you can see over the last five years where the growth has been. You know, we were, we had 352 million in new construction back in 2005, and this is for the whole county. To this past year, we're at 696 million dollars in new construction. So as we look at all this new construction, where is that new construction occurring? So you can see that, you know, New Smyrna Beach, Deland, Daytona, and unincorporated Volusia County are where the main growth is in new construction.
John, quick clarification. The first one, the five-year new construction totals, you're saying that's countywide, including the cities within the county, not just.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay? So. So as we go through this now, now we're going to go specifically into the general fund. Okay? So for the general fund, we have projected 30 million, 704,394 dollars for our general fund expenditures for next fiscal year. Okay? And this sheet here, it does show you where we are by department for the overall budget. Okay? Now, I want to make sure I point out to you that so far, we have expenditures of 30 million, 704,394 dollars. So as we go to the next slide, I want you to, you know, please take note that we have revenues of 31 million, 200, 31 million, 127,507 dollars. That difference is what's available unprogrammed for capital improvement projects, capital outlay, et cetera. So that's the delta between our revenues and expenditures, which is 423,113 dollars. So as we're here so far on the general fund revenues, I want to point out that the property tax revenue is the estimate based on our current millage rate of 3.8416. The state revenue sharing is flat. Those numbers have not been released as yet by the state of Florida. So to be conservative, going with what was last year. The utilities commission, they've released their proposed budget. So this is straight from their proposed budget. The public service tax, those are also flat from prior year. You know, because, you know, we don't truly know yet, you know, what the communication service tax, et cetera, will be yet because those numbers haven't been released yet. The charges for service, this does include, as a reminder, the Brandon Center, the golf course, and all other charges for service within the general fund. Franchise fees, you know, Waste Pro, our utility gas providers, et cetera. And then our other sources are just all of our various miscellaneous revenues. Okay? And you can see that our property tax revenues are 49% of our overall budget. And you can see, you know, where the other revenues come from as a percentage of the overall. Okay? So then we go and we look at our general fund expenditures. So you'll see, you know, our public safety is 43% of our general fund. Transportation or streets is 5%. Building and maintenance, 2%. The transfers out of the 5% are 1,385,484 dollars. 207,000 of that is going to the, you know, for the Brandon Center, Live Oak, because, you know, those two operations, you know, are not self-sufficient. But again, it is still part of the general fund. The other 1.1 million dollars is for debt service. Okay? So those, that's transferred out for debt service of the general fund. Okay? So then let's kind of compare where we are last year to this year in terms of our property tax. As I stated, you know, the staff's proposed millage rate is the same millage rate as this current fiscal year, which is 3.8416. So, you know, so therefore, that percentage change from year to year is zero. Due to the increased property values, we are able to reduce the 2005 debt service general obligation millage from .339 to .2981, which is a reduction of 12%. So overall, our millage rate is, you know, proposed is going from 4.1755 to 4.1397, which represents a .86% decrease from the prior years. And as I stated, the property appraiser did release the preliminary numbers last week. Okay? And also on our ad valorem proceeds, everything is per statute at 95% of estimated ad valorem proceeds.
Quick question on that one. Maybe you remember, especially Colletti, maybe you remember from the course up in Jacksonville, they specifically called that out, and I'm trying to remember what it was. Is it state statute that we have to have it at 95%?
Yes, sir.
Or that's the minimum that we can have?
State statute because.
You estimate it 95%?
Yes, sir.
Either your collection rate has trended higher.
That's correct. And the reason for that is, is if you pay your property tax bill by the end of November, you're given a 5% reduction, and every month thereafter, it goes from 5, 4, 3, 2, 1.
Yeah. Yeah. Because I thought I remember this being one, the class on Sherker had said, be on the lookout for the maybe an opportunity to, you know, found money type thing, but maybe I'll dig up that manual and find it. Go ahead.
That's where you'll see typically at mid-year budgets, you'll come back and you'll do the budget amendment on the ad valorem proceeds. Okay? So now we go to the property tax increase. So where did our property tax, you know, the current ad valorem, projected ad valorem proceeds is 1,308,586 dollars greater for next fiscal year than this fiscal year utilizing the same millage rate? That annexations brings in 2,527 dollars in taxes. The new construction will bring in 311,396 dollars. And then the roll increase of existing parcels brings in 994,663 dollars. On that roll increase, it's always, you know, important to note as well is that, you know, if someone added a pool to their home, an addition to their home, tore it down and rebuilt it on Riverside Drive or anywhere else, then that also, you know, allows the property appraiser to come in and reassess that parcel. So, you know, that roll increase is, you know, some of it is natural through the 3% on homesteaded properties or the non-homesteaded properties of 10% and the renovations of a parcel. So of that 1.3 million dollars, how are we projected to spend it? Well, you know, as I said to you before, we currently have 423,113 dollars that is available to be programmed somewhere. We're using, you know, we're spending over 1.5 million dollars on capital equipment replacement within the general fund for a total of 1,943,306 dollars. So you can see that, you know, we're, you know, from the current year to the projected year, we are using some of our existing resources to fund this capital outlay and particular, capital improvements because we've only seen an increase in revenues of 1.3 million. What are the costs of the positions to the general fund? It's 359,000 dollars. So that 359,000 dollars equates to .0868 mils. So if the commission did not want us to add those positions, then that would be the dollar amount that we could reduce the budget by to use for another purpose, or we could reduce the millage rate in its entirety. Okay? So what are the major drivers in the general fund for this coming year? As I stated, you know, we have the increase COLA, which is 637,000. We have the new positions that I've already discussed about, and the capital equipment and capital improvements. So I put that capital improvement there because as a reminder, again, we have not budgeted any capital improvements. We do have the 423,000 that can be utilized for it. So as we go on, here are all the capital improvement requests which are currently unfunded, not in the budget. Okay? So these are all of the items that have been requested by staff, by citizen, by commission. The estimated cost that staff has gone back and put together, and the associated millage that we would have to increase our millage rate by in order to fund it. So these next couple of pages, and we can come back to these. The first page is everything parks and leisure services related. The next page is general government. For example, I want to just point out one of the items that's on this page alone, the FEC 10th Street Railroad crossing. We don't have a choice to fund that. That is one that we will have to fund. We've received a letter from FEC telling us that within six to 12 months, they would be coming to do that. So that will be a project that we must fund. Okay? The Tyler Munis upgrade, that's another one that's on the upcoming commission meeting this evening that if approved, then we would need to fund that as well. Okay? Then the next few pages are all of the items that we took from the transportation sales tax initiative that were identified over the last year that need to be done here within the city, and the cost and the estimated millage. So if we were to do all of the items on these few pages. So if we were to do all of the items on these few pages, they total $37,236,159. In order to complete all of these projects, it would require 8.9976 mils to complete. Obviously, that's not realistic, but that's just the idea of what the cost is. As we go to the other funds, capital improvement request, these funds are built into the budget. We have the Corbin Park and Historic West Side Stormwater Master Plans, those are $500,000. And we also have the Reasonable Assurance Plan for Diversion Structure Improvements in there at $1 million. So we have a total of $1.5 million program for stormwater capital improvements. In the airport fund, we have $1.485 million in capital improvements. And in the CRA, for next year, we have $746,698 that are available for us within our CRA, and we'll be coming back in, at the July 23 meeting, Mr. Adi and I, with more detail of where we can utilize that funding in the upcoming fiscal year. In the marina, we have $476,000 program for next fiscal year, and I want to highlight that of that $456,000 is for the mooring field right there across from our marina. So as we go through here, you will see that our overall citywide budget expenditures are This is a reduction of 3.94% over the current year budget. And I just want to point out that this current year budget of $59,756,829, that is through Budget Amendment 1619, and this evening, we have Ordinance 4519 that will be first reading, but I won't update those numbers until after that is approved by the commission. Okay? So in summary, you know, we have to go through and, you know, I've provided a line item budget for y'all on your diocese evening. Within your workshop PowerPoint, I have all the projects, capital improvement projects that are unfunded, that we'll need to go through and determine which ones should be funded. And we will come back at the July 23 meeting. If there's projects that have to go towards next year, we just need to remember at that July 23 special meeting, that's when we set the maximum millage for the general fund, the 2005 INS debt service millage. If there's anything done with the Turnbull Creek land acquisition, we have to set the 2018 INS millage rate for that. And then we also have to, on the 23rd, we also have to discuss the stormwater user fees that will all be part of the TRIM notice, truth and millage notice that the Volusia County Tax Collector sends out. That TRIM notice will go out in August of this year, and it will also have on there our first public hearing date, which is scheduled for Sept- Wednesday, September the 11th. And then our second public hearing would be on our regular scheduled evening of Tuesday, September 24th. The reason for moving the first public hearing from Tuesday to Wednesday is it can't conflict with either the school board or the county, and therefore, we have to move it from Tuesday to Wednesday, so there's no conflict. With that, I did provide for you a book, booklet here in front of you. I've put in there this PowerPoint. I've put in there the detailed line item budget by fund. So up front, you will see the detailed revenues, followed by the expenditures. I've also, in there, by fund, it includes all the capital outlay. So it has specific detail of what the departments have requested on the capital outlay. I have on here the detail of what our salary and benefits from this fiscal year to next fiscal year are proposed to be, and this is based on the COLA that, you know, we're working on. This does not, you know, this is subject to change based on negotiations. Y'all had asked me at a previous meeting, what is our outstanding debt? So I've listed by fund and by debt instrument, our exact debt service. It shows principal and interest. Over to the right of that, it will show total out years projected. There's four years that are not shown on this that I've consolidated into the total out years, so that it would fit on one sheet. So, and then finally, as I spoke to everyone yesterday, we only wrapped up and released the caper from the auditors last Thursday morning. So I had to go in and I had to analyze, what is our available fund balance from year, from fiscal year 9/30/18? Take into account what our revenue and expenditure projections are for the current year, so that I can derive at what our available fund balance is that can be utilized within the general fund, our impact fees etcetera. So just for example, you know, if I look at this, you know, it will tell you that we have in the fire impact fees, $1,109,774. So if the departments, you know, when we come up August 20th, and they say, well, you know, we could do the fire training facility, and we want to do it in phases, and the first phase would cost this, this gives you an idea. I will tell you that this, we're currently on the end of June, so as we close our third quarter with June, as we close our July month, when we come to our August 20th workshop, we will have a very good idea, especially in the general fund, of where we will be at 9/30/19. So right now, it shows that we have $3,084,000 available in fund balance that can be utilized for other items. I've already set aside the estimated reserves of 25%, so that's covered. But what I want to always point out is that in the general fund, we receive the majority of our revenues come from property taxes. We received the majority of our property taxes by the 1st of January. So it tapers off. So we, you know, by the end of this month, we will have received all of our ad valorem proceeds. Those are all released in June. So the monies that we have not received is our state revenues, our franchise fees, and our UC, you know, 6% that, you know, we received from, you know, electric water sewer, reuse water from the UC. So that's why I say, when we come back August 20th, this will be a pretty good number for all funds, operating funds. So to me, an operating fund is the general fund, stormwater, airport, golf course, solid waste. Okay? Oh, and saying solid waste, this budget does have the, the waste pros proposed increase that you will be hearing this evening as well during the commission meeting. So with that, I will open up and answer any questions that y'all have. And Mayor, I have the one question you asked previously before we started tonight, if you'd like to hear that as well.
No, we'll get that number, we'll get that number, just wanted to have it.
Okay.
In case it, in case it came up. Okay, gentlemen, a lot of, a lot of information, obviously, and remembering that this is a, a series of conversations, this being one of the first ones, not making any decisions tonight, but I do think we should start giving some direction, some thoughts, some ideas as, as staff is kind of proceeding through this. Obviously, I think the biggest takeaway is, just like in your own personal budgets, just like every other business you're part of, the things you would like to do and the things you can afford to do are two different things, and you got to prioritize, and you got to figure out, you know, how to, how to do that. So with that, I will open it up for questions or comments from the commission to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick questions. One thing I want to point out was, street paving, I can see that that doesn't seem to be increased in the budget, or was it not?
Yes, sir. Actually, that's a, a very good question.
Because when I looked in the projects that we've allocated for, it didn't look like street paving was either increased or addressed.
Yes, sir. That's actually in Fund 302.
Oh, okay.
So right now, what we did as part of the, this budget, is we have the new LOGT, it's not new, it's been around for years, but that's what we call it here. We have the added gas tax here in Volusia County, and that brings in 396,000, I'm sorry, $394,582 in revenue to the city. That money is restricted, that it can only be used for repairs of our infrastructure. So that is the baseline that I spoke to the city manager about, that we would always try and use for our street resurfacing. We've budgeted an additional $105,000, bringing it to $500,000 for next year, if that's what the commission would like to see. Right now, it's at $394,000, but do you want us to bump it to that $500,000?
When you say right now, in these numbers, it's at the 390?
Yes, sir. Yep.
So wait, 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 let me, hold on. So it's not at the 5, it's at the 390?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it hasn't been increased?
We increased it from $250,000 to $394,000, because I gave it a one for one. I, I have the money from the county that has to be used towards that purpose.
Okay, so let me get to my point. Thank you, I appreciate that. The, and my one thing is, we, obviously, the commission cuts streets budget, that's the first thing to go when the economy goes down. So we've got to make sure that we're going to compensate for that when the economy goes up. I have a couple of streets that are in very, very bad condition. So aside from the fact that we may need more money budgeted for our street surfacing, I have deep concerns about the company that we have used, and I'll address this again during commission comments, not to belabor this issue right now, but whoever, whatever company we've used to analyze the streets has a problem. And if anyone wants to see it, you can look on the existing list that was given to us at the previous meeting of what's going to be done for next year, and you can compare that with Lake Fairgreen Circle. You can skate on the street, that there's so much gravel on it. So, you know, there's two different problems here. One is, we need to make sure we've had budgeted enough to be able to at least deal with the worst of the streets. And then on a separate issue, I'll bring it up during commission comments. The second question I had was, and I think you said it right at the end, this budget still retains a 25% in the reserves?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And is there, you met with us privately, discussed with us some ideas you had? Where are we at with those ideas that were proposed? Are we looking at reducing the reserves, or where's that discussion at?
No, sir. When we met at the last commission meeting, or last commission meeting in May, it was stated that the general fund reserves would be at 25% minimum. So I'm able to hold it at 25%. I can increase it. Like I said, just utilizing the information I have today, we have roughly $3 million in fund balance. So if we wanted to use some of that $3 million to bump up our general fund reserves, we can do that.
So we're still retaining a 25%?
Yes, sir.
Reserves, and that's what's in this budget, proposed?
Yes, and that, that equates to...
Yeah, no, that's okay. That's, I, I don't need that. I just was making sure that that's what is in this budget, and checking to see where we were at, but you've, you've answered that.
I did not have to use any budgetary numbers for next year to increase our reserves, because we have it already.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm done.
Vice Mayor?
Page 17 of the document, under Police Vehicles, it's in red. Is there a specific reason why? The 227,000?
No, sir, there's absolutely no reason. That is not to indicate anything.
Okay.
It should have been in blue, if anything. Sorry.
Because usually that means a negatives, and I was...
No, no. There was no, there was no insight to why that's red.
Okay. All right, that's all I had, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. How about sidewalks? A question about sidewalks. We have a priority list for streets, which we haven't really prioritized yet. Do you think we'll have enough to get started on sidewalk repairs? The same amount as, with equal consideration as to streets?
Right now, Commissioner, we have, in the maintenance arm, we have $30,000, and that is for the sidewalk repairs. If you look at the list that was provided in your package, it has all the items from the Haves and Sales Tax, which included quite a bit of sidewalks, new sidewalks. What's left between the revenues and the expenses, as he mentioned, is 427,000. So that's what's left for you, if you want to keep the current millage. So whatever you add, you're going to subtract from the 427. What we'll do at the July 23rd is we're going to put it on a priority list for you, and most likely, the sidewalks will be one of the top priorities.
Clody, any thoughts?
Yes, I do have some. First of all, I have to get a taller chair. I'm one of the taller commissioners, and I'm sinking out of sight here. So if you hear my voice, I'm really here. As I've expressed all along, I do have a concern over the ultimate millage rate. We have a lot of new properties coming town. We have a lot of funds available through that. Granted, we have a lot of cost of living things. I'm not comfortable with this overall millage rate. I do want to see it go down. I have a great wish list, and I'm willing to give up some of that if it keeps more of the taxes in our personal pockets. I do have just one question. What we have is the overall millage rate is staying the same, correct? The debt service millage rate is going down.
Yes, and if you, if you look at the PowerPoint he gave you...
Oh, I believe it just...
No, I know, but it went down about .8, .6%.
And basically, what you've done is you've taken the general millage rate and raised it.
No, it's a...
To compensate for the decline in the...
Slide 15, if you can, Kelly, can you go to slide 15 real quick?
The, the general operating budget at a millage of 3.8416. The debt service is .2981.
So the total is 4. something?
4.1397. It was at 4.1755.
So that's...
That's a decrease of .86%.
That's a good start. I would like to see it a little bit greater, because we will be... I would like to see it a little bit greater because we will be funding, our debt service is going to go up because of the Turnbull Creek purchase. So I don't want us to think that just because our debt service is going down, that it's going to keep going down, even though it has. So we have to pay very close attention to what we keep adding to this budget.
And that's why we, I told them to break it up in such a way to give you the exact revenues and the exact expenses so you can see what the difference is. And then you will choose whether you want to take that difference and drop the millage, or you want to take that difference and do some of the projects on that list. As I mentioned in my early points, that this is, it's a bare minimum budget, what we gave you. We could go in and, you could go in and reduce some items, but I don't know if it's going to be that effective to reduce it to the much that we wanted to reduce it to.
Well, we don't know that amount yet. I know during times when our income, due to the, the recession, if you want to call it that, we did reduce our budget, and we did manage to survive. So I just... I would like to use that as a guide. And if we have to make some serious decisions, that we make them. That's all. Lot of pages, a lot of numbers. I will go over them, and I will discuss it. One, just one other thing, is when we do get to the stormwater fund, in that particular line item, I would not mind some increases due to some of the environmental concerns we have over water treatment and stormwater control.
I want to go back to one thing you had, you had said, just because it kind of, I think there's an interesting dichotomy between what Commissioner McGurkens said and what you had said. I hear you. There is this survival mechanism that kicks in when, when the revenue is not there, you, you make cuts. And so the question is, what is being cut? And do you eventually have to, you know, pay the piper? And I think in this case, we can look back at some of the things that were, that were cut, and perhaps not everything, but we can look at some of the things and say, we now kind of have to pay for that. We look at some of our street and other infrastructure, and, you know, is now the time to try to pay for that when we're on a, on an upswing so that we have a little buffer in the, in the bad times? So that'll just be an interesting thing to play out. I, like you all, this is a lot, and I do plan on going over it individually with, with staff in detail. But I did just have one, one question. I hate to put you on the spot, but the decision's at the next meeting. So I just want to be sure we're on the same page. So on slide 19, if you would, Kelly, the Tyler Munis upgrade, which is something I'm a huge fan of, and we'll talk about the next meeting. I don't want to litigate that right here. But I noticed in that agenda, it says the, the city would need to budget as follows. FY 2020, 630,146 is what's in the next one. Help me understand the disconnect.
This is the general, this is the general fund portion.
So part of that could come from other funds?
The other portion would come from building in the inspection funds because the biggest portion is the inter-gov module, which is 100 percent.
That makes sense. And I guess the, one thing I would say is what I'm, I appreciate how this was presented. I know I'm skipping to the next meeting a little bit, but I appreciate how this was presented. I like how this was presented as well, with the mill impact. And I think as we move forward, I would be looking for more of this type analysis when we're presenting these type of budget items. So that as the year goes on and we're making these decisions, we understand this is the price that we're eventually going to have to find somewhere else as an offset, or that we will be, when we get to this meeting next year, we'll be looking for 0.0436 mills to pay for that item. So I think in future agenda items, I'd like to see this type of, this type of thing, so. That was really all I had. Again, I've got a lot of other comments, but I'll just, I'll take them offline with you all between now and our, now and our next meeting. I do think we have, we have work to do, obviously.
As we mentioned, that even though this has quite a bit of details, but we wanted to provide more details for you at the end of the week. So you'll have that information the whole entire, almost the whole entire month until the 23rd of July. So we could go into a lot more details.
Okay. One that I did forget to ask, I'm sorry, but I think I found it. The 1.5 million capital, that's, that's this capital equipment plan that's in the back?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And actually, it has more details with it.
I see that.
So you could go, it's itemized.
Got it. Okay. Gentlemen, any closing comments on this?
This particular budget or the budget process?
I think now's the time. We got a minute or two here, so.
All right, so what I would like is a consensus from the five of us, is that as we go forward, thinking about next year, we have three employees that we're responsible for. I would like to look at their contracts, evaluations, pay adjustments, anything of that nature in April of next year so that we can discuss it, and it can be part of the budget planning process. Because as we need to adjust those salaries, you can see that there's not that much money left if we do it today to fund those. But if we have those discussions in an April-May, May meeting, then we would be able to put that into the, the next year's budget and fund it accordingly. And that would be a part of the process. So think about that, and we can talk about that at the July meeting.
I absolutely support that.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback off that question for Vice Mayor?
Is there, is there at least one position that we might have to consider increasing their salaries now? Or very soon?
Well, you have, you have the, an interim city manager and an interim city clerk. So at some point in time, you're going to have to give them a full contract.
Sure, right.
And their, their six-month evaluation will be, I think we, February?
December, January?
Yeah, somewhere around there. So at that point in time, that would be the time to address making them whole, you know, given the market, whether we do or we don't. But we need to have that discussion at that point in time so it can be presented in the budget process and, and be fully funded, and not have to come out of reserves or something like that at the end of the year.
So our agreement would be, at that time, we would visit those salaries?
Yes.
Increases?
I mean, that would be what I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the, the evaluation, and we can, I think we need a conversation about that evaluation process. I'm trying to figure out how other cities do that. It's, that's, you know, no one wants to have their evaluation, you know, and, that's tough. I mean, I'll just be candid. I'm an employee, I get evaluated. And having it broadcast live on the internet would be tough, so.
Yes.
I think there's a way we can do it, though, that we can have an evaluation process, so.
Right. Whether we do our evaluations individually, in private or whatever, but, but if there's going to need to be a salary adjustment or a benefits adjustment, then that can be done at that time. And then we can, we'll know that we have to fund it for the upcoming budget cycle, so.
Agreed.
I'm just trying to get ahead of the game because I talked, had a conversation with John, and I said, if we wanted to raise somebody's salary by 50,000 dollars, where's that money going to come from? And he says, well, you have 3 million to play with, but that's going to get you through the entire year, you know, the remainder of the year. If you have a hurricane pop up, what you going to do? But if we can add it to the budgeting process, I mean, that's when the rest of the departments have to start their wish list. That's where we should start our wish list. So, I mean, that would be the time to look at it from the way I see it.
Yeah. Agreed. Are you proposing that the Zone 4 Commissioner get a 50,000 pay?
No, just the Vice Mayor.
Just the, the Vice Mayor, okay, I got you. You know that rotates away from you, right?
I'm not, I'm not an employee, so, yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, not to belabor, but the gentle lady to the left of our Vice Mayor, she's now in a new position. Should we consider salary adjustment now, or does she have to wait till...
I think that's going to be done at...
That's on our, that's part of the city attorney report at our next meeting, we're going to be talking through.
Fair enough.
Technically, we haven't done anything with that position yet, other than just appoint her as interim. So I think that's a whole conversation we're going to have.
Good.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks.
Okay. If no other discussion, any other business on this meeting? All right. If not, we're going to adjourn this meeting. The next meeting will start at 6:30 right here, so keep your seat warm.